Six thirty, all the meeting for, I'll turn it over to Greg. We're gonna be bowling tonight, so we can be chairperson and the other officers. Greg's gonna have it tonight.
Good evening. First, we'll start with the chairperson. I'll take nominations for the chairman.
I nominate Frank. Second?
I have a motion in the second to nominate Frank, who should have the chair. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Paul Bullock? Frank, congratulations on the nomination for chair. Would you like to take over to be the vice chair and the secretary?
Lost power for thirty seconds.
That was quick.
Okay, at this point, I suppose we'll take nominations for vice chair.
Nominate Keith.
I'll second.
Nomination made by Mr. Hanfler and seconded by Ms. Dalberg. For Keith, anyone else? Hearing no other, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Looks like Keith here is vice chair again. At this point, we're looking for a secretary. Any nominations?
Oh yeah.
All right, Doug.
I'll second.
Hold your hand. Okay, nomination for Doug Dalberg. Do I hear any others? Hearing none? It's been, a nomination has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Doug, you give the ask and take the notes again. Okay, at this point, I suppose looking for someone to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Agenda's been adopted. So I'm looking for approval of the minutes for March eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
So?
I'll second.
Doug made the motion, seconded by Keith. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes. Okay, at this point, we're gonna open up a public hearing. First one is after the fact variance request to allow for approximate six hundred eighty-one square foot single-story garage to be located twenty-five point four feet from a front yard, which at this point is a minimum thirty-foot requirement. I'll turn that over to you, Greg.
I'll actually have Ben handle this one here. All right, so back in two thousand and six, the, this building on this property was constructed and was done so with a conditional use permit. And one of the conditions that was part of that approval was that they applied for a rezoning from B three to R two. And so that was apparently never done. And another aspect of that is that in their building plans, they had shown a garage, which is the subject of this first section of this presentation we've done here. And in various plans, they had shown it meeting the required thirty-foot setback. They had self-property line there, which technically is covered right-of-way, even though the road is not constructed all the way through there. The road ends right here, but that's covered right-of-way, so they have a thirty-foot setback requirement. It was built just over twenty-five feet away from that line, so it's been that way for all that time. They've gone through a number of financing, or refinancing arrangements over the years at various points. Since I started working with the city anyways, we've been told that that's, you know, non-compliance with the setbacks, and wasn't ever granted variance, and so we're looking to clear that up and get it figured out. So not conforming. So relatively small garage. It's not, it's not next to an actual constructed road, and I don't believe there's any, that's a constructed road through there, since it goes way up against the highway. It does have some, so it's, this goes underground there, as well as sewer line. I think requested for variance to allow that to be in the area of Gaspin since two thousand and six, twenty-five feet plus or minus from the property line instead of thirty.
Anyone want to speak about this? Hearing none? Any letters?
No letters. I received a few, I think three phone calls, just with clarification questions about what could be proposed there. I explained it, they all seemed satisfied.
You have no opposition to that? It does look like that road's not gonna continue. At this point, we close the public hearing. We open up for discussion amongst...
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
No. Ben, do you know on that, look at the corner, that house is actually closer than that garage?
Probably the main building.
Right. Is there a different setback for the primary versus the garage?
Uh, no, it's the same setback. I can see where it appears that way. From the survey we received, it shows that it beats the thirty-foot setback for the garage. It'd be that...
Probably right at thirty feet. Looks like maybe the angle is running something there.
Yeah, I can see it being angled. If you look in your, if you look back at it, it does show that survey. You do have to look very closely to see, but they did shoot it at thirty feet. But I would say that that does meet the, pretty close.
So if we don't approve the variance, what is our other option?
They're gonna have to either move it or remove it. My understanding is there's a concrete slab underneath it, so they would have to extend that slab. I don't know what they're gonna do on that.
So if the decision is made to recommend to the council to allow this, this variance make, then that would favor to resell it on the fringe on the sale of it at that point? Okay.
And like, Mr. Chair, like I mentioned on the staff report, there are a few notes in the file, some building inspection reports, when this was all being constructed, to have some notes about the setbacks checking out, he doesn't go to refer to it, I can't tell from the inspection report, which building would it be?
Well, it looks like it was not a mistake.
I mean, like, there was, there was notes and there were some comments about maybe the setbacks. I think obviously the fact that there's no road over there, it's a false, false sense of security. But it was, it was maybe setbacks. I can't, I can't speak to it.
Or they could have assumed the setback came from the road itself and not the, the line that's a little bit on the road, part of the right-of-way.
Yeah. I don't know if the landlords are sure. They could've changed hands.
It looks pretty obvious that it wasn't done for any gain, just because it was just, it's always been like it was just a honest mistake. They measured from the wrong point, or... Because if they moved it five feet the other way, this gain really isn't gonna change anything.
And if they were to slide it, if a road might come through there, which I doubt.
Yeah, it's gotta go halfway down, so...
Yeah.
I remember those used to be roads.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second public hearing at six forty, I opened this up to request rezone approximately five acre property with an existing assisted living facility from R three, that's a multiple-family residential district to a B three, non-central business district, or to remove conditional requiring such rezoning from a previously granted two thousand and six conditional use permit. Are you gonna handle that one too, Ben?
Sure. Mr. Chair, again, I need to clarify upfront, I did send, we did send out a revised notice to the neighborhood, the zoning that you just read is wrong. It's zone B three now, and has been zone B three. And the request is to rezonate to R two. And again, this was a condition that was put on the two thousand and six approval of that conditional use permit to build this assisted living facility, was that they rezoned from B three to R two. And that happened, and so again, I tried to clarify that, clean that up, so that refinancing happens, the property trust is handling it. So in this case, they're, they're doing what they were asked to do, but they, in the alternative, the applicant said if the city is comfortable, they could also consider just removing that condition and making it zone B three. So you, I think, you would have, if you're already, I would say, to do that, it's all a two-sided turning of the knife, obviously. But if you wanted to just say, we're not gonna make that, that could be the second option. But the formal request essentially was to meet the conditions, opposing the two thousand and six to R two.
R two, so this is written all a little bit different in our pamphlet here.
It shouldn't be R three, it should be R two.
Yeah, that, that notice, the original notice to the newspaper and the neighbors was incorrect, and what's in the agenda here, except for that. So we did send out the corrected notice to the neighbors.
So the correct would be an R, R three to an R two?
B three.
A B three to an R two, or leave it as is? Just drop the conditional. Hearing anyone in the audience wants to speak about this? Go ahead. Enter your, come up to the podium and give your name and address, please.
Ken Cole, fourteen seventeen Fairview Lane. What, as, referring to it as going to an R two, oh, it's going from a R three to a B three, but then we get the letter that revised it, that says it's going from a B, from a R, or B three to an R two. So where, where is the, you know, what does the R two have to do with what was saying here from an R three to a B three? Because why do we get a correction notice that said R two?
I think that's what Ben just described.
I can show, this is the current zoning map. And so, yes, that was a mistake in the original notice.
The original notice said from R three to a B three.
Correct, that was incorrect.
And then the fraction is saying of B three to an R two, but in your agenda, it says from R three to B three.
The agenda is incorrect as well.
What does R two actually mean?
R two is a residential district, R one, R two, and R three are all residential districts. And the R two is a single-family or, or multi, or two-family dwelling district, basically. That's kind of the base for it, because most homes are in that district or that. It does allow for assisted living type facilities or similar type facilities like that as a conditional use. And then, it's a conditional use whether you're in the B three or the R two, or wherever it was. So that use went through a public hearing back in two thousand and six, it was only B three. And as a condition of that approval, they said you want this to be a result of R two. They aren't getting supposed to apply for that. So it's going to R two. This is the current zoning map. This is the property here. You can see it's only B three, just like everything around it, although most of what's around it is residential in nature. Most of these homes, this is making it...
So it could be apartments?
What's that?
So it could also be apartments?
Not under R two. Not as I said. Well, I mean, not, not large scale, or you could have rental units, like sort of...
Is that building considered two duplexes or, or as one? Because they are connected in the middle.
Large building, it's just considered an assisted living facility. So in the ordinance, it allows for things like nursing homes or assisted living to be allowed, even though it's typically a two-family or one-family type district, it does allow for those after a public hearing consideration.
Because if they do decide to make it into a multi-unit, you've got a lot of jobs that were losing in the city.
If they were to convert it to...
Right, to a single-family or double-family unit. And there'd be more units there.
Under the B three, they would be, they would be less restrictive, so they could allow for that. Under R two, which is what the request is to change it to a more restrictive, so we just allow for that.
So it wouldn't allow for single or two or four families to move into that building?
Correct.
So it would have to stay as assisted living?
And that's, that's what the conditional use permit is for, is for assisted living.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, oppose this public hearing at this point? Open up to nomination.
Senator make a motion to approve the rezoning request? From B three to R two?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Are those other units also gonna end up rezoning them to B two? Like that development, those other developments?
In here?
Yeah.
That's not the request tonight, I hope.
No.
They would have to request it, or just say, you know, a separate, you know, public hearing. Separate comment. So right now, it's just that parcel of, that's just the property they want to be in.
Okay. Ben, do you know from, in the minutes, was there any discussion or reasoning why they went, wanted the request to R two to put a little spot zone in the middle of a B three?
Not that I could see, but when you look at, in the front of your back, there's the fold-up map of the conference of plan, and it identifies that whole area as appropriate for more residential.
Or residential R two, because that's basically what the use is.
So I, if I had to speculate, like, it would be something related to that, but that's just speculation. There was nothing direct in the minutes that really led to that.
Or it could've been just what you were discussing a little while ago, with the B three, it opens it up to a lot more, and maybe by keeping it or requesting to go to an R two, would've kept it at an assisted living, and they couldn't do anything more with it. Kind of put a little period on the whole thing, and so nothing else could be done.
But it's got a conditional use permit on it, it's not like they can go tomorrow.
It's a use from what it was.
Right. They can't go tomorrow and make it into sixty-unit apartment building.
No, they would, I guess in my opinion, they would, they would need to ask for rezoning to R three in that case, which is why I'm not gonna do this. But that would require another public hearing, another chance for public input.
But even if they left it as a B three, they'd, you can have a kind of business going, you know, apartment buildings, they just can't come in and pull a permit to go in and put an apartment building on B three if you're leaving B three. To me, that's, Doug, about getting away from spot zoning, that's flopping right in the middle of nowhere.
So the B three, if they were to put in larger rental properties and that, didn't have to go through a conditional use anyway, would it?
It's no different than the whole rest of the neighborhood, it's not like, if there's a little spot there.
If anyone else could do the same, Ben.
One of the things about the B three district is it talks about residential uses are in there, and has a little bit different requirements than everyone's on commercial uses. The way the ordinance is set up, if you can see, I've got smoke right here, but B three is central, is not central business district, permitted uses would be anything around the B two. You go back to B two, it, you know, it kind of cycles back to B three. So in terms of, you're wondering whether apartment building could be allowed there?
Well, if that's the road going in, it's B three, it's basically a business, and assisted living to me is a business, for it to make money, and we're going as a residential.
Yeah, so when you get back to, B two allows within R three, R three, this will be here, this will be one, I should say. Nursing homes, the rest of the retirement homes, which is essentially, it's the same as assisted living, as a conditional use permit, even though maybe a commercial. R two only allows to, one and two family homes, and then multiple dwellings, not more than four dwellings. And that's only living in, like, old schools, for instance, or old churches, those kind of things. It's gotta meet certain restrictions, so. The only time that really the ordinance is set up to allow for large apartment buildings is in R three, or a business district.
Well, so we're kind of caught up here with recommending it to drop the conditional use, or changing it to an R two. Petitioner wanted an R two, so I guess that's what we're looking at, either approving an R two or not. Could we at this point drop the conditional use permit?
Not conditional.
Not just the condition.
Oh, the condition.
No, the condition. You could rather drop in that condition, that they rezoned and allowed this to be. I think, you know, not to speak for them, but I, I got the sense that they just wanted to make sure that they were compliant. One way or the other. I don't know that they were prepared as much whether it was R two or B three.
Anyone else? Any discussion here? Do you think about this, dropping the conditional use? Keeping it a B three, because it would create a spot.
The motion was made to switch it, so we're gonna have to vote on that first and then...
Yeah.
So the motion was made in a positive for an R two. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion does not carry.
I'll make a motion that we drop that, this condition of the conditional use permit, to keep it as a B three, rather than switching it to an R two.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded to keep, keep it a B three, but drop the conditional use.
Conditional requirement of rezoning.
Yeah. Requirement of rezoning.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All those that are for the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have another conditional use permit to allow for a planned unit development. We'll open up that hearing at six fifty-five. Whichever one of you two want to handle that.
Okay, so what we have here is a request, we have two, two parts to this request. The first part is of the agenda, was from the rezoning from R one C to a planned unit development in Old Burnley District. And we put that out there in case we needed it, and then we had subsequent discussions with the city attorney about how the ordinance applied in this situation, determination was that, that was not necessary to allow for what was, what is being proposed here, and might have some negative unintended consequences if it were to be done that way. And so, I guess, the applicant can state what his wishes are, and if that's what draws, then I think it's not necessary, I think the customer wants it done that way. The second part of it, just to get into that, just to get the big picture, is that, what he's still zoned R one C in this scenario, and within the ordinance, it allows for what planned unit development within different zoning districts as a conditional use. It doesn't have to be a rezoned or off of that, this is a public hearing, like we're having right now. And what that conditional use, or that planned unit development allows for is for more than one principal structure, in this case apartment buildings or, or four places, to be on one property. So rather than splitting the lot into multiple lots, and having homes on each lot, this is a way to grab some flexibility to allow for development that would be substantially similar to what would be allowed anyways, but in a different configuration and a different ownership structure. So that's the purpose of a planned unit development, to allow some flexibility to do things a little bit differently than the standard block, block subdivision kind of thing, as long as, as long as the city finds that it's, you know, not gonna be substantially different than what's in the rest of the, you know, in character of that, at and how you do the city. So that, that's the overview of both applications, with, as I said, the rezoning is not necessary after talking to the city attorney a little bit. So if the applicant's willing, we can still draw that, or we could still draw that part of the application, or if they're not, then you have to act on it to, to win it or deny it. And then, however you act on that part, it would still have a conditional use for the planning development itself.
This property's taken all sorts of twists. Okay, anyone from the public wants to speak on this matter?
So do we need to address number three, though? Even though it's withdrawn, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think we have to. Do we have to ask the applicant whether they would like to withdraw?
Okay.
If they would, then you would have to have it withdrawn.
Can you hold out just a second? We'll talk to the applicant. Would you like to speak about this?
Sure.
Okay. Audio.
No, we're talking about number three, correct?
The rezoning from R one C.
The rezoning, right. Is that what you write your own document that way, then? Because it's kind of, kind of cute.
Well, I mean, the, yes, the short, the short answer is yes.
The condition use permit that I requested, kind of ignores a type of PUD that needs to be acknowledged, it's a non- rezoned to a PUD, it's a conditional use out of PUD. Other lines only remain the same in the grant.
That's correct.
I would like to do that.
So withdraw the rezoning application?
We identified rezoning as a conditional use to a, over the PUD.
That was what it was, it was going to be, yes, it was going to be layering a planned unit development in a district on top of the R one C, that was going to be the request. Condition to a, for a PUD to include construction of a single-story fourplex building. So you're doing a planned unit development, it's just that it's not, you know, a planned unit development district, it's just, it's staying R one C.
Under conditional use.
And it's a conditional use permit that requires a public hearing still. It's going to allow, if it's approved, it will allow what you're asking for potentially.
Her public hearing takes place tonight, and that condition use request kind of comes into the courts with me, I believe, when they trust that with my request.
Yes, I want to withdraw the first one and act on the second one.
So there will be no action taken on number three?
Yep, okay, thank you.
So, I would close this public hearing and move on to report or if that continuation.
No. Sure.
No, okay. Do we need a motion?
Put her on, sure.
Okay, no motion. Okay, uh, that public hearing is closed, let's move on to, uh, number four, holding up that public hearing. Do you have any more to say on that one, Ben?
Well, just again, to try and clarify, it, so the zoning is still the same, as it is today, it's still R one C. And the ordinance allows for this, this sort of flexibility of allowing for a planned unit development to kind of lay it out differently and have the ownership structure we determined, yeah, but it normally given a lot block, so. That is the request, is to allow for that flexibility, to allow more than one primary dwelling structure on this.
Could you, uh, tell the audience here what an R one C is?
R one C is a zoning district that, uh, is, again, typically a single-family or a two-family dwelling would be allowed in each lot. And so, they've got eight point eighty per floor, so they could put one two-family house on it, or one single-family house, and that would be allowed without any special public hearing.
Per lot?
Per lot, it's just one lot right there. Their other option would be to subdivide that parcel into multiple lots, and however many they felt like they could fit in, they wanted to fit in. And then each one of those subdivided lots, if it was approved, they have a single-family house on it, or a total. What they're asking for is a third option, which is something that would allow for these eight fourplexes and thirty-one total residential units in that. All to stay under one parcel, under one parcel.
If they were to subdivide it, they could go up to sixty-two?
Um, we ran some, some layouts, I knew that question would come up, um. The number of lots that we've come up with is nineteen lots, uh, and obviously, depending on how you lay it out, you can have differing lots, anywhere from fourteen to nineteen. This particular layout here has nineteen lots, um, so if you had a duplex on each one, that's thirty-eight units, maybe we'd give two of that. Now, again, you may be able to get more, you may be able to get less, just depending on how it's ultimately laid out, if that's the option of the owner of the home, but but this particular one does have, uh, has nineteen lots, that would be able to fit out.
Okay, uh. Thank you.
I'm Bruce Smith, this is Almane Land and Trust Company, and I'm here to represent both the properties that, one forty-three nineteen Alstree and the adjacent property at one sixty-five ninety-one Riverwood, which are, what's identified as the last four digits there is two thousand, at the center left, and eight thousand.
Sorry, Bruce, what is your address?
The address is, well, I'll give you the one, it's twelve, uh, Timber Lane, uh, Timber Creek Road and, uh, Newark, Delaware, which is the corporate office for Sawmill. And it's ownership of the last eight hundred, the last eight thousand number there. Uh, that was part of the problem, apparently, because, as you noticed, there was a problem with the addressing. For the eight thousand location, we received the notification for the second item on your agenda, it was misaddressed and misidentified. And when I was in Nigeria, I wasn't about to get your mail, I do have a forwarding service, but you'd have to get it to the right place in the first place. And obviously, the property at two thousand there, you're not going to be able to reach Byron Smith easily and have him appear here, so that's why I'm representing him by power of attorney. So, you need to do more due diligence on who you're sending your official notifications to.
Bruce, if I may interrupt real quick, I will say that we send them to whatever the county has as the owner of record. So if, if there is an issue with that, I would suggest talking to the county, make sure that they have the right address.
Have it recorded.
Yep, I'm not sure if the tax statements would get to the right location as well, because it would be the same situation.
I'll tear that tomorrow. Uh, but we are strongly opposed as representing almost seventy percent of the adjacent property not bounded by public highways. And we do not want that many residents, dwelling units packed into that kind of an area. This prop property was initially part of the Pine Tree Lumber Company, back in nineteen twenty-three, when, uh, the mustard ran this operation. And to corrupt the area with, with that kind of housing, it, it, it's, it's not conducive to the entire area. Uh, on the other hand, there are standards, I've spent the last three days looking through the Mississippi Headwaters Board information. There is no standards adopted by the city of Little Falls that are in compliance with the Headwaters Board. The last, uh, zoning map that you're sourcing your information from there is references of being updated in nineteen eighty-nine. Where's the information that's supposed to be addressing the annexation? You need to update this material and correct everything. So because of that, we're requesting a, uh, not only just a continuance, but a whole moratorium in compliance with the, uh, Mississippi Headwaters Board and their rules and regulations. Uh, and they reference State Statute one oh three F three point three seven five. And rather than take any more of your valuable time, I'll provide you with our letter, as well as some reference material there, from the, uh, various agencies here in the state. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Go forward.
My name is Pete Ergman, I have a one four four six seven Laurel Drive.
Slow down. Do you want your address again?
One four four six seven Laurel Drive.
Thank you.
About two hundred and twenty-five yard wide, what far I go, four yards. If the road was in. Uh, twelve years ago, I think when, about twelve years ago, when the city annexed from Belle Prairie Township, uh, we had many discussions like this about our neighborhood. Uh, we had everything from what the, what the residents wanted out there, uh, in that, in that area, and I don't know how many things were just weird, they wanted to put all the power lines underground, they wanted everything. But what came out was to leave the neighborhood as it is now, single-family dwellings, uh, apartment buildings, uh, duplexes. Uh, if they want to put duplexes on everything, a lot and lot them off, I, you know, you can't, I can't say anything about that. But if you start putting a whole bunch in one little area, and cramming them in there, you know, put, put a regular street in there and lot it off and put it in that way. Uh, why would you want to have driveways and parking lots and everything else for these residents, uh, make regular roads in there? Make it so, you know, you have more places to walk out there. More, more, uh, backyards, so, you know, people can actually have regular places to, to see things in, in the neighborhoods, so. I would rather see it as what is out there now, and not make a special, special assessment, uh, do anything, because if you make a, if you make one now, who knows it's going to come in two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now, um, somebody else can, can do the same thing. And then people, if somebody's house burns down, they'll say, hey, I got an acre here, I can, I can put two of them on here. I can put two sets of duplexes on this thing instead of just one of them, they have an acre lot. So, I would rather see it the way it is now. Thank you.
Steven Bukowski, one four two 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 Erosia Drive. I would like to speak against the application tonight. Um, I think this issue, when the orderly annexation was agreed to, was something that was, uh, negotiated and a lot of time put in between the city council and the town board of Belle Prairie, when the orderly annexation agreement was finally resolved and agreed to. Uh, and the, the big question is, what would the undeveloped land in Belle Prairie Township, how would it be used once it became in a part of the city, how would the nature and the character of that area be preserved? And how did they decide that? They decided that by zoning it R one C. Rural residential country home, that's a single-family residence or a, or a duplex. I think both parties ended up compromising on that. It's the largest sized lots that the city has in their ordinance, but it also required that the township would, would accept the fact that duplexes can go on there, not just single-family residence. So that's how it was finally decided, it became a part of your comprehensive plan, you amended your comprehensive plan to zone it that way. And now we have this concocted PUD method to throw the zoning out, and we can put fourplexes in there. I don't think that's what was meant by that agreement, the agreement should be honored. I think, um, I think that if you really look at that, that's really not following your comprehensive plan either, if the fourplexes are allowed. I also have some real concerns with what, uh, the construction of these fourplexes in this manner will do to the property values out in that area. There's been studies that have shown that concentrated affordable housing developments are very likely to impact them in a negative way nearby property values. There was a study that was done in Ramsey County that found substantial reductions in property values when the housing was clustered, as opposed to negligible reductions in property values when scattered throughout a neighborhood. This is not a good way to provide affordable housing. This, again, this does not conform to your comprehensive plan. I think lastly, this past week, the city council gave direction when they considered the application of the goal. They said that they are not going to accept applications that change the character of a neighborhood. How, with all these single-family residents completely surrounding this, can we believe that putting fourplex rentals makes, it, it doesn't change the character of that neighborhood? It certainly will. So the residents here, we're asking that you give us the same consideration as you give the residents of the left side. Thank you.
Just call, one four one nine six, Erosia Drive. I would like to echo the same sentiments that have been said previously. I am not in, um, support of the proposed plan, and that, that, everything that's been said, I agree with, and the one thing that I want to say is, when you were going, when you were talking about this, the rezoning, just, just a second ago, you said that according to the city ordinance, that they would allow for this PUD if it did not change the character and makeup of the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yeah, there's more exact wording, but.
But that basically, what, in no way is putting a fourplex in a neighborhood of single-family houses staying within the ca, the character of that neighborhood, it's just not the same type of dwellings, it's not the same type of place. So if we're, if we're going by what you just said there, that in order to do this, the ordinance says, as long as it stays within the character of the neighborhood, if we accept this, then we're going outside of what that, what that says, that's just what it's following. Thank you.
Greg Valentine, one six seven eight four, Mississippi Boulevard. I'm a chaplain for Morrison County and, uh, emergency services worker, and there are also two state patrols that live in our neighborhood that have used Erosia. And with the increased traffic flow, I have real concerns, because I've talked to the state patrols before about us being really careful when we leave, when we're leaving our homes, going out to something that's very important, you got the drenlin, that kind of thing. There aren't very many times that I go out that I don't have somebody walking on that road. My wife and I intentionally hung around on Saturday, worked in the garden, and told them how many people went by. We counted forty-eight people that went by, some of them with bikes with their little children inside the, uh, back of the carriers. We have other people that are on those nautical bikes, older people that are doing that kind of thing. We have people walking by, and I'm really concerned about having a housing development, uh, duplexes like this, and the traffic flow that that's going to put on that road that's already being used quite a bit. Any of you that live in the area know what I'm talking about. So I am very concerned about it, just, just for the fact that it doesn't fit with the traffic flow, you need a different kind of traffic flow. I'm personally not against housing people, I'm not against it because it's low, it, it might be affordable housing or that kind of thing. I want that for people, I love people, but it just doesn't fit with the character of the neighborhood, and I want to go on the record and say that.
I'm Carl Markson, I live at one four two five two Erosia Drive. My wife and I moved in the neighborhood in September of last year, and, uh, if I would have known that this was coming, I guarantee I would have looked at it differently, might not have moved in the area. If I have this point of view, I'm sure later on in the future, other people are selling or trying to buy a house in the neighborhood, doing the same thing. So I'm just here to, to urge the council to, instead of looking at one developer's request to, uh, come in here with fourplexes, look at how, how a whole community comes together to, to oppose this, and, uh, just like we all have to say.
You know, I'm asking, one four 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 six Laurel Drive. And I am, want to say that I'm opposed to this, uh, we moved into Laurel Drive here in seventies, and we've been out there and watched this grow as a neighborhood, and this is contrary to what everybody has moved in out there. Thirty-two families moved into one small area that we asked to accommodate. Fourplexes. Road system isn't tied up for them. That much additional traffic and everything else, I just want to say I'm opposed to.
Same as Ryan Short, I'm in fourteen two twenty-one Laurel Drive. Now, the proposed build does not match the current integrity of the community, that's for sure, the single-family homes in here. The single-family homes in the area will suffer from the additional traffic. There are area residents riding for kids, walking with children, you know, stores or children on their own bike, learning to drive. We have residents with disabilities walking. These neighbors walk on the streets because we do not have new sidewalks there. The additional traffic on the streets, as well as through the road, will become a hazard to those residents who have built their homes. We moved there because it was a quiet neighborhood, instead of most of all these areas. I'm very much opposed to this development. Thank you.
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street, Southeast. I have a question. How many more areas like this that are large in size have the potential to go under this PUD idea? And my reason for saying that is because what if Scott Gall and his parents come back and ask for the same thing, a PUD overlay on the property that they were just denying? Does this council, does this city have the power to override for them as well or any other potential large property like this? I want to add that I think too, to put a large amount of low-income subsidized affordable housing in one square block, whether it's at Buck Lane or Key Row or anywhere else you have in the city, stigmatizes the poor. I don't like to see that. Your Habitat for Humanity homes are mixed, interspersed with regular neighborhoods. Why not these homes? I don't understand that concept. And I want to add one other thing that a lot of people may not be aware of. Between 2012, spring through the fall, maybe even into the winter of 2013, the city council and this planning commission rezoned 15 to 20 PUD zones because the city hadn't done proper procedure to allow for signs in those areas. I know, after doing extensive research, that those PUD areas, including Bell Prairie, the school district, Linden Hills, and all the other units, the areas that were PUD units that were rezoned and given an underlying zoning title. You guys did that because you couldn't, the city could not, give any sign permits in those areas. This city and its governance is upside down, and this is deeply troubling. Tonight, I heard people be concerned and troubled over mistakes that were made in sending out denouncements and corrections made and so on. This is not correct, city government.
Just to add something to that, this is a recommending board. Purpose for these meetings is to find out information. We don't dictate or anything. We can recommend to the city council. It does fall on their shoulders what the final decision will be. So it's just like if you discussed the GALL property. This board actually recommended to allow that. City council decided to go against what the recommendation of this board put across, and the same thing can happen here. If we were to say we want to go along with this, the city council will look at it in a whole different way. And it's good to hear people's voices because then that's how we know what should take place in a given area. Everyone could have came in here in support, and of course, we're going to be influenced by that, and we'd probably take a different step as far as what we do recommend. So it's good to hear this. And as far as things, you know, we're not discussing other areas right now. We're discussing this one. You know, as far as how the council handled the other situations. You mentioned there was property around town. There's a lot of cleaning up going on. You know, some of these decisions were made back in 1970s, and the day has changed. So the new governing bodies have to take a look at that and clean up some areas. It's not like, it's just like what you heard on the first items today. We had to take a look at something that wasn't in compliance, make a decision to recommend to the city council. They might even ask for that one garage to be moved or taken out. That's all of our hands. We can just say what we find out tonight, and we can go on a recommendation, and that's all the power that we have.
So may I ask you a question? Can this body answer tonight? Ben Olson is here. It's his job to be the zoning administrator. Can this body make a decision, under the authority of the city council, to rezone and do this underlying PUD zone thing for any large property in the city?
We can't make any decision...
Okay, city council. Can you guys recommend to do that with any property?
We can recommend, but as, you know, a case example, at the last city council meeting, they went against this board's recommendation. So, and why? It's because they've heard from more people.
In the council, all we're trying to do is interpret what's written in our laws.
That's right.
To the best of our ability, we're trying to interpret what this is saying. What an R1 versus an R3 versus a B3 is. According to the laws, this is what we're reading, and this is the way it's supposed to be. Whether or not the city council approves or disapproves it, that's up to them. We're just making recommendations of our knowledge of what these rules and these zoning require, these zoning regulations.
Okay, so if you're making a determination or trying to get an answer about that, I would like to, as a citizen, find out if, in any way, shape, or form, any other lot in town can be put under this PUD thing, the underlying, whatever you want to call it. Legitimately, can that be done?
That's off from track, and what you need to do with that is you need to take it up with the city. Oh, we don't have that information in front of us. We don't. We're not dealing with these other properties right now. Robin, we're dealing with this property.
This is a question in relation to what's being asked for.
Okay, at this point, we're going to continue this, and we're not going to get off track anymore. Anyone else in opposition or for?
I'm Gordon Williams, and I live on 14394 DeRozier Drive. I'm in the middle there, where we're talking up there. I have a petition that got over close to 70 signatures. And it's saying, we, the undersigned citizens of Little Falls are against the proposed development of DeRozier Drive and any PUD overlay or rezoning changes along this road. We support compliance with the existing zoning district.
Captain Schirmer, thank you.
Let me take a look at him, and then I'll just pass it and we'll get it back to him.
Gordon, was there more? Was there just two pages?
There's one right there. You should get a copy of that petition.
Everything was like... Oh, okay, okay. My apologies, hang on.
Your turn.
Okay. I'm Mike Conley, 14278 DeRozier Drive. All right, so... I'm glad, the commission here, you can be glad that all these people spoke so eloquently and did such a good job here, because I tend to ramble, and I'm sure I'm not going to. But what I had to say was, okay, 31 houses with cars onto our street. We've heard about the safety and all of this. And I know Terry here would have us believe, or like us to believe, that these are little old ladies who only drive to church on Sunday. And well, to do the little ladies that drive to church. But think of the volume, 32. Who doesn't have two cars sometimes, three? Even elderly go places in singling. Next thing. The elephant in the discussion is that bringing in utilities down the road, tearing up a perfectly good road for people who have perfectly good sewer and water to help our developer. And the last thing I wanted to say was, in many of our discussions, we bring in a lot for various reasons. And someone asked, well, is this helping? And Greg Kimlin said, well, it benefits the city. Well, we are the city. We were dragged in to be in the city, and it's not helping us.
Heather Bell, 14196 DeRozier Drive. So from the city ordinance N1D, right off your website, I'm just going to read this a little bit here. It says, "The variances for this PUD overlay will not constitute a threat to the property values. Safety, health, and general welfare for owners or occupants of adjacent or nearby land nor be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, or general welfare of the people." And it goes on, basically saying the same thing. So as everyone has said, and as I'll say, I don't obviously agree with this, development, and we just talked about how, you know, the study that shows that property values do go down, which goes against what the ordinance says. The safety, I have three of those small trucks I'm willing to ride their, two of them right now, willing to ride their bikes around this corner. So there is a safety issue of this general area. And so again, according to the ordinance is what you're asking for with this PUD. It goes completely against the purpose of changing the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Name's Tom Evans, 12552 Bryant Street. Over about four blocks up, there are two years ago. We always came around the curb by Riverwood. And if I come around that curb and seen all those apartments, I wouldn't have went any further. I moved from Minneapolis. And if they let that go through, they'll have apartments clear to the river. So I'm against the whole thing. Leave the neighborhood looking good.
Thank you.
Peggy Rexsted, 14292 DeRozier Drive. Like everybody else here, I'm completely against this development. When my husband and I purchased our home, we purchased it for the quiet neighborhood, the single-family neighborhood. Not to have twoplexes or fourplexes coming and completely destroy the whole dynamics. Can't say it any better than everybody else has already, but like everybody else, we are opposed.
Nick Abbott, 14184 Lowry Drive. Mrs. Rexsted arrested. So the same thing I'm going to say is, I have a very young family. That's why I moved in the neighborhood. It's a very nice, quiet place to live. I can't say it better than anybody else has. It's a safety requirement, and I like that. Opposed this.
I'm Eric Markson, I live on 14576 Smith Avenue. I would say I'm opposed to it. I moved here to the neighborhood a year ago, it was nice and quiet. Small family, small kids. I can see already, living on Smith, the limited houses we have. When people want to drive down the road and they want to cut crops, they'll cut down Smith. And not everybody pays attention. I can see if we had 32 going, they're going to do the same thing, especially if there's a proposal that the road comes over right on the end of Smith. They're going to find on the road, to knock it down on the road. Do you think it's a safety hazard? And it doesn't fit with why I'm in the neighborhood and I'm deeply opposed.
Anyone else want to speak, for or against?
I'm Kathy Lang. I live on 16542 Riverwood Drive. And in looking at this proposal, I'm concerned about all the traffic that's going by my home now because from DeRozier, they're going into town to work, or heading to town to the grocery store. That's 32 units times two cars. That's 64 cars. The average person goes in and out of their home to the grocery store to work six times a day. That's 384 traffic stops going past my home, right on Riverwood Drive. And at this point, I don't know, I see cars speeding up to take that curve when they're coming back home, and how unsafe it is for even pets to be out there, let alone small children. So I am opposed to this. Thank you.
I'm Gerald Mares. I'm at 14595. And I'm opposed to it. And I'd just like, if I may, have the people stand who's opposed. I'm also concerned about the safety, but also the security of the area. We bring in that many units of rental as far as crime. Our crime rate is quite low out there right now. And you put that many rental units in there. I think in the past, if you look at the different records, the crime rate goes up. So I'm totally opposed to it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
I'd like to, of course, I'm interested.
Yes, yes, yes. No, you have, you have your right to.
I'd like to make a few predictions. These are not, what you can refer to as affordable. They're going to be over a thousand bucks for the rent, which of course means it's going to be a tenant. Jeremy speaking. We have over 160 units in this town, and they are folks just like all of you. Seniors and professional couples. So kind of shame on you for assuming that since renters are terrible people, they're going to go fast and disrespect your area. That's just completely wrong. The condition of use is, I'm allowed to cut that into, as they say, 17 or 18 lots pretty easily. I can break that each. That's 36 or 38 units pretty easily. That's the same amount of traffic management. So clearly, this project is opposed to anything in the next vacant field, which everybody is. Nobody wants it in their backyard, and I don't like that. However, to assume that it's going to be a rotten project and destroy the values and create traffic issues that are unbearable, it's just completely wrong, and it's unfair to assume that, and kind of badmouth the project from the get-go. With all the facts, we build good fences, we keep a good eye on them. We don't want this worst trap going on. We do have the means to deal with it. And it's something good for the city, worth in the tax base, and the, is the just places for people to live. This is where Philip instantly, with very quality tenants from town, open up all their homes, has waited to sell them over to the next couple of folks. And the study says you need 50 some of these built, that was from 2011, I think. This is a perfect spot for it, quiet neighborhood. Folks who rent, they want to live in this neighborhood, and they want to walk on a quiet street. Folks who rent these want to live in this neighborhood and they want to walk in a quiet street, as does everybody else. Kind of the implication that all multifamilies want to be, as Robin said, shoved by Walk Lane or Hero. No one who wants to live in a place that doesn't pay for any more in life is going to want to live there. So we're catering to different types of tenants and we're very successful at it. And they're very well-received around the whole state. They're not owned and they're always full and they're always under control. None of them are nuisance or crime-ridden or traffic hazards or anything that affects, as you all saw, the community in time. Just to defend our project, that's the point I had, we need the condition used to allow something more sensible than dividing that into eighteen single individual lots, which, uh, takes up a lot more room, a lot more road, a lot less appropriate layout, a lot tighter setbacks, crowding every corner, removes every tree from the property. This is just a better way to do the same thing, which is provide brand-new single-level rentals for the seniors in the town. That's what I got.
This guy can't control the streets after he built this. Seems to think he controls the traffic. What else? Oh, yes.
I can't control the people that live in the property.
Can't control the traffic, he had all the cars, they got people living with him. Going to be out there, traffic, take care of it.
Are you in their neighbors?
Are we?
How do you assume that our project is going to be full of rotten people going on?
I didn't say rotten, I said they never, any of them.
No, you have to address here, we're not going to get into argument.
All right, I'm just saying, any apartments, you're going to have more people. More people, they're going to take care of the roads. Can't say nothing to him. But he's not going to threaten, because he don't live there.
Okay, your point is taken.
I don't know if the, the lecture was appropriate because we found out about this when all of a sudden we got a, uh, our neighbors got some assessment notices in the mail. Did they ever provide any information? Everything was kind of, tried to rail it through and then tell us that there's no trust. We didn't build no trust. There was, this, this came from the fact that everything was tried to, to be done, uh, kind of behind the scene and you have to buy your information from the city, you find anything out, do your data request and buy it and then wait for a week and see whether you get it in time for a meeting. There's no trust and we didn't cause that. And don't flex trust, because if there's no trust, then why should we believe it? I don't, I didn't make it, it could have been done way differently and it should have been. But this is where we are today. So we still, I think, stand opposed.
The way it stands is, uh, this was a request from a petitioner. This is the way we usually handle, you know, public hearings and that. And everyone has a right to come in and you have. So it's not like people are trying to be sneaky. In fact, the road issue isn't even part of this. The road issue stands, it's behind other streets that the city council okayed to finance to do that whole road. That's, that's not even been discussed yet. And that's, that's a council issue. So, uh, what I'm seeing here is there's a lot of opposition to this project. I'm also looking at what Mr. Roach says. He can only put up to thirty-eight units, which are going to supply a maximum seventy-six cars. If he locks that thing off in smaller portions and it goes residential where each has its stance. He has a right, without even coming in for a public hearing or anything, he can partition that whole thing off. And how many, you said thirty-six units? Thirty-eight, it's, it's the same trade-off. You're going to end up with the same amount of housing and traffic.
No, you're going to actually end up with less under this PUD, you'd only end up with thirty-two units.
Okay. So the PUD would actually be less traffic. It's, I'll continue here and then I'll, I'll ask you. What I'm seeing here is if you're worried about traffic, there's two ways people can get out. That'll alleviate some. If you go with single development homes in there, uh, it's going to be all ran up DeRozier. There's not going to be that other line coming off on County two sixty that would cut down the traffic. As far as aesthetics or how it affects the value of the neighborhood, I can honestly say I did no, no study on that. And that's something that, where you get that information, I suppose you would have to check that out, Greg.
What's that, in terms of the aesthetics?
If it would depreciate or lower the property of, uh...
I think the study that really was meant to be called, stated, was written referring to a fourth housing, which would be the subsidized housing, which it's our understanding from the applicant that neither are. So I don't, I don't believe that study would be valid in this situation because it's not fourth housing, it's not subsidized.
And if I lived out there, I have to be honest, I, I can't make a biased judgment here. I'm a bird watcher, I like nature, you know that. I plant trees whenever I can. And I lived across there, I want to see a nice open field all the time. But if somebody buys that property, I have no control what they do with what they bought. Before you, your houses came up in that area, I'm sure there were a lot of people mad at this once big wide open area, that they probably walked their dogs, their kids played in and stuff. All of a sudden, there's families popping up all over. They probably were very upset at that point too. So this, this I understand. But we have to make a decision here, basically, from the input from you. Things like, uh, what's our comprehensive plan? Are we following it or not? Does this go contrary to that? You know, we have to look at things like that. And, uh, is it going to depreciate the property? Because if we do things that just come out flat out depreciate property, we made that decision, you do have a case against the city. That's the law, you know? So we have to look at things like that. So at this point, we have to sit down and rationalize between ourselves what we are going to recommend to the city council. And we're each going to do it independently. I haven't spoken to anybody about this and I don't know if they did. I probably doubt it. So, uh, we're going to have to go forward. If you feel you need to speak more on this matter.
Just, just one quick question, Frank. Can you put up there what the layout would look like under the existing zone and subdivision on that property? Can you put that up there right now?
Turn off the lights. Is that over?
No.
What's your light on there? No, it's your light there.
Can you change that or not? There, that's better. That was.
That's, that's what it would look like with the nineteen lots.
And is, is there parkland involved with this?
This would not have parkland, because we have all that land over at the arc. We wouldn't be requesting park dedicated.
Wouldn't that be a council decision? And isn't that part of the preliminary plat process? How come that is...
It is, but it's a recommendation that we would make to a building. It doesn't make sense to have a park in this area where we have the arc in four blocks.
I've got two houses on eighteen acres, you're going to need a park in that area.
It seems like this is where they've been using the park, but that's here over there.
Excuse me, I just have one point on that. And what you've simply threw it out, oh, well, if they had duplexes, well, then you wouldn't go on Riverwood, they'd all go on DeRozier. And I say, why? That could easily have come out onto Riverwood.
It did. It did.
It did. Part of it did, about half of it. That's the first time I saw that plan.
All right, I was going to call you on that. We didn't have, see this at the...
Yeah, I'm glad, glad you brought that up.
Frank, that's what it's been.
Another surprise.
That's what it's been the whole time is to now you give a little tidbit of information.
Yeah, but you guys remember, none of that's, none of that's been approved. This is, this is only a...
Right.
But it wasn't even shown to us.
Can I say one thing?
It wasn't the applicant's request.
Little, little bits are shown to you, little bits that, what? Nobody gets the whole information. You guys have this information back there, you have this, but none of that gets brought apart. So you hear little bits at a time. And that's what's so frustrating, because then things keep changing.
The only reason that was drawn up that way is to show you the difference between lots versus a PUD. That is not, that's, that's not even, that's not even coming from Mr. Roach, is it?
Not even coming from Mr. Roach.
This is something that he took his own initiative to do, to show you the difference between if they built it as lots, if we did it as a PUD. It's got nothing to do with...
It's not even guaranteed it would look just like he did.
No, that's the most he could do.
All that traffic could run out of DeRozier if that's what the property owner decided to do. And as far as even us getting all this information, I purposely don't talk to anyone because then it's like an open meeting law violation. We can discuss it between small groups, but we can't get all this information ahead of time where all we can judge this on is what the petitioner came in and his request is what we see right there. Everything else is, it's, uh, it's just out there. Yeah, it's not even substantial. So at this point, and it's not like there's some kind of big conspiracy out here that we're trying to hide things. Like I said, that's the first time I saw that other plan and they could throw up ten different scenarios besides this. So...
Maybe that's, maybe what you're saying is true, but Frank, it truly legitimate because that issue of what could go on there the way it is, needed to be known from the get-go. It's to whether he laid it out or whoever laid it out. It's a question that you guys should have asked or it should have been out there right away because that's what this is being compared to.
My assumption is, all I've heard was from Mr. Roach, he could run all the traffic out there. And then I've seen this plan. Another plan that was just brought up now, uh, that's not even worth the paper it's on because it's not anything concrete, it's not even something Mr. Roach has requested.
But a subdivision goes through a public hearing, doesn't it?
The plan would go through a public hearing, yes.
It's the same thing, we get to argue about traffic and we get to argue about layout. And we, it's not like, it's, he gets to decide that, we live out there too. That's what this is all about. So to say that if it was subdivided, that, that this is all going to be like this and there's going to be thirty-eight lots out there, that isn't true. Because the council could be changed and get to decide that that's too much out there. And they'd make, they'd make them put the park in or maybe make the roads different so that there isn't so many, that many lots out there.
You'll probably find when you do talk to the council, once this goes before them, like I say, they don't always think like this committee and this committee doesn't always think like them. So, uh, it's a recommending board again. And, uh, what we're doing now is gathering...
What, what, nobody seems to understand your...
Please, please.
Okay, go ahead.
We're just gathering the information here and we're going to pass it on with our recommendation. Sometime tonight, we're going to get to that. And it's good this is going on like this, I like to hear the input from everyone. Personally, I like hearing it. And then I'm going to take this all into consideration. Like I said, a lot of people did their homework. You know, things like comprehensive plans, Mr. Smith coming forward, his idea and why he, they held on to this property. The fact that, like, you guys pulled into the city, this was a long time before I've been around, this is all decided. And it was a group of people had their chance at that time to say things too, opposition or in favor. There was a lot of opposition at that time, you would not be in the Little, in the city of Little Falls right now. You can't claim the city. All that came along. Well...
None of us were, none of us were on the planning of something.
None of us were even a part of that.
I'm sorry, that's all I can tell you. I'm a volunteer, we're all volunteers here. We're trying to look out for the good of the group of the city of Little Falls. We all, we all live in Little Falls, we all work in Little Falls, I should say that, we don't all work in Little Falls. We all live in Little Falls. We aren't trying, we aren't out here to get anybody. We're trying to make this as orderly and as progressive as we can. Nobody wants this in their neighborhood. I'm, I'm sorry, that's the way it is. That, this is called progress. This is what happens when, you know, once upon a time, the city of Little Falls was a, was a cattle pasture. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, people moved in and they started building houses. This is the way of the future. It, it, I mean, cities grow.
This isn't houses, but these are not houses being built.
People, you've got to think, people living in a residence is a house, home, whatever you want to call it.
This is not a house like everybody else's house out there. No, not even close.
What percentage of the people in Little Falls live in apartments?
We're not talking like...
Okay, enough. I think we have enough information here. Uh, everyone, I think, had their right to speak. Mr. Majares got up and he kind of got a consensus. He said, everyone stand. I didn't see anyone sitting except one person and then I couldn't see back there either. But I'm, it's safe to say the majority are in opposition. I know Mr. Roach, I've worked with him in the past. All I can say is...